Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone that is in council chambers with us this evening and those that are joining us. We had Zoom, I apologize for delay. Before we move into agenda adoption, there is a request to move the transportation bond update, which is located under all this section E to next month. Because a person presenting is unable to be here with us this evening and they would like to present that. So is there a motion to amend the agenda and remove that item until next month?
I'd like to make a further agenda change, please. I'd like to allow item two H under consent agenda and move it to item six C. Two point H is the set of public hearing for the main nights to consider annexation of properties off of Central Trade and future. To item sixty, which is.
Yeah, you can make one motion to amend the agenda.
So we've got a move, we need a motion to amend the agenda, re moving, let's see, the transportation bond update to next month and then pulling out under consent agenda, item two H, moving it to sixty new businesses. Is there a motion on the floor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Motion is carried. Yes, sorry about that. This evening, we were supposed to have, I believe Reverend Watkins from Oak Grove Baptist Church to lead our invocation, but he has not made it in this evening. So I would like to ask Ray Helm if he would mind leading us in the invocation this evening.
Thank you. Let's go to Lord in prayer. We thank you, Lord, for this great city that we live in and country. And I just thank you for the mayor that we have, for the city and the council members as well. And I just ask you to, goddamn with your wisdom, that is, to make decisions that affect residents in this city, that they would look to you for their guidance and we can live in a wonderful peaceful town. We just thank you. Christ name and prayer.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Helm. Appreciate that this evening. If everyone would please stand, join us in the pledge of allegiance. Right along, we have one special presentation this evening. I'd like to welcome Mark Allen, who is the Harrisburg Business Alliance President, to give us an update on HPA. Welcome, Mark.
Good to be here this evening. Thank you for having me, council members and Madam Mayor. I wanted to give you a update on the Harrisburg Business Alliance. And for some of you who may be new to the council and may not be completely familiar with the wide-reaching scope of what we're trying to accomplish in town. The Harrisburg Business Alliance has basic mission statement, which is aligning with businesses for success. And our vision is really a four-point approach. We do it by building relationships, which is largely B to C, but can be also B to B. We are a liaison between the businesses and the town and county government. In fact, our board is made up of two representatives of the town. And additionally, we have a representative from the chamber as well as the Harrisburg Business Network. So it's a good cross-section between town officials as well as business leaders in the community. One of our goals, too, is the education to grow and improve businesses through fundraising and networking events, which has been, as we know in these, I hate to say the word COVID, but facts are facts. And that has certainly been a challenge the past few years. We also are working to create pathways between business and others in the community, much more of the B to C function. For those of you who may not know, the Harrisburg Business Alliance was formed informally back in the mid 2010s, between years incorporation process in early 2020. And with some input from the town, just to make sure we're dotting all of our i's and crossing all of our t's, because we will kind of do it this as well. And it is a federal application that you have to make for a 501(c) status. Took a certain number of months, but we were able in late in 2020 to actually file the papers and we received approval in January 2021. And a part of our three-year budget that we submitted to this process was that we would be self-sustaining by the end of 2023. And we changed our bylaws because there was town support, financial, as well as in spirit support for what we were doing. We changed our bylaws so that our fiscal year is concurrent with the town's fiscal year. Now, when we began formal operation as a 501(c) organization, we were in the middle of an unprecedented situation. But nonetheless, we were able to conduct our monthly meetings, our reach-out for businesses. We did those via Zoom and for a challenge, but we were able to do regular monthly meetings until the third quarter, when the COVID restrictions began to loosen, we were able to have more in-person meetings. But as we all know, with the restrictions and natural hesitancy of some people to come face-to-face, that's been a slow process rebuilding. And we've had in those meetings speakers as well as town representatives, such as, recently at our monthly meeting, we had business etiquette, something that we all like to think we're good at, but you never know. We also have had, as part of the town liaison process, we've had town departments come and present at each one of our meetings, but one of our meetings was entirely dedicated to the different departments of the town and how they may relate to business more in the outreach capacity to the community. We also have had how not to get sued specifically on business. That's a negative way of putting it, but that's what it amounted to. So best business practices to keep you from being put into that situation. And the liaison capacity, I'm sorry, to the Harrisburg After Hours, this slowly resumed as we were allowed, I shouldn't say allowed is the wrong word, but as people were more willing to go into public locations together. We have had Harrisburg After Hours, which is a business-to-business networking event, which we do monthly at a local restaurant here in Harrisburg. In 2021, and one other thing, too, we've also instituted free Harrisburg Business Profile video. So we've taken various businesses around the town, especially lately focusing on the newer businesses, and giving them the opportunity to tell their story, which can be, they can use on their own social media, but we certainly use in our social media through the HPA Facebook page. In 2022, we continued the business profiles, the video services through now with April being hired. And I want to give her a call. She's doing a terrific job from where we're sitting. We're communicating very well back and forth on activities in the town that we're able to boost on our social media. And the town has been very gracious in putting the messages out that we have about our meetings as well as the business profiles. We've digitized all of our documents, which is a big deal, because we have documents going back five and six years. So that was, that was a significant undertaking. We are increasing our social media presence. We have created a YouTube channel where the videos that we are producing will live as other videos that we acquire from the various businesses in town. And also, we are creating an HPA website that is in and of itself, anybody who has ever created a website, that is quite an undertaking. We want to make sure it reflects both professionally on the organization itself, but also on the town as well. The big news that we've got on a B to C capacity is that we're going to have an event on May 24 at the Pinnacle Bank, which will be Harrisburg Spring Celebration. And this will be an opportunity for businesses, and we did this in 2018, by the way, before COVID. This will be an opportunity for businesses and town departments to have a presence there for the public to come out. And this will be just, just an opportunity for everybody to gather in an open-air environment. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate. And we're looking forward to being able to do this type of event on a somewhat regular basis. Well, what does a somewhat regular basis look like? Well, for 2023, and we're talking fiscal year 2023 now, we want to continue the business profiles. We're going to do a fall disc golf tournament, which will be the kind of thing that can help raise revenue for HPA. We're expanding the business to pro, business to consumer event. For instance, the event we're doing at Pinnacle Bank, we're looking to do that quarterly. Again, weather permitting and season permitting. We're looking to strengthen business participation in the organization. And we appreciate the council members and the mayor who have invited folks to join our Harrisburg After Hours or our regular monthly meetings. This is the best way. The truth is, word about is everything in a B to B environment or in a business community and consumers, no matter what it is. We come because someone invites us to come or makes us aware of something we may not have known about before. So that is, that is something that we're going to be doing more of. The, we're, one of our ways to become self-sustaining, as I mentioned, our goal at the end of when we filed charter was the end of the calendar year 2023. Now we changed the fiscal year. We're looking to be self-sustaining by the end of 2023. And we'll do that partly through membership dues, but also through events such as the disc golf tournament, which can raise some revenues. And we also want to further communicate and coordinate with town businesses related to initiatives town has. And I think we're already starting to see some of that with the way we're dovetailing with April and communications here. Pushing out, we would much rather you deliver the message to the community through outlets such as us and other, other resources, rather than the jumble telegraph, which we all know can sometimes take and maybe not quite interpret what you're really trying to do. So that's where we are working to increase coordination with the town to help get that message out. Because we all know ultimately what we're trying to do in Harrisburg is make this a business-friendly environment. Videos that we have produced, the business profiles, we have asked the question, why did you locate here? And one of the responses was Harrisburg is a growing community and they are just the kind of customer that we are looking for. So that is where we are and where we're looking to go.
Thank you, Mark. Got any questions from council?
I have one. You may or may not know this, but in FY '22, we had budgeted for a sort of a retail recruitment study to try to see what kind of businesses might want to locate to this community. Clearly, that has shifted over the past two years and my thinking has shifted. So a lot of these businesses struggle. What is the top two things that you're hearing from the local business community on where they need support? How we can be involved in sustaining them, because a few have closed, a dry cleaner and a load of things. And, and then what can we do in the future to help bring additional businesses?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I've talked to several business owners here. And one of the issues that occurred, when a lot of businesses had to shut down, was to ramp back up with employees. And we know that having worked from home, the paradigm shifted. People that were used to going to work, they didn't. They were doing it from home. And they were finding other ways to fill that gap with income. Or in some cases, and this is a really big issue, daycare. People can't find affordable daycare, so they couldn't go back to their employers, which rippled down through the ability to open at the number of hours that they wanted to open. So that is one of the issues. And the changing labor force. One of the things is, I think we've all seen it in our respective businesses, the attitude that we may have brought into employment when we were first getting employment has changed. And so those are two of the bigger challenges that I've heard from employers in town. And that, I would, I would say from the UDO is very complete and speaks well to it. And I would continue to encourage the town to have an open dialogue with all businesses. The only way that everybody knows what everybody is thinking is to talk to each other. Not, not talk over each other, but talk to each other. I'm not suggesting Tom has not done that, but that's the big thing. There's a really open line of communication. I think there is some real strong opportunities here. Thank you for the question. I asked that question myself about six months ago when we saw some businesses struggling.
Any other questions?
So the end of 2023 fiscal year, you plan to be self-sustaining. Are you going to continue to ask the town for budget money to help you get by?
The overlap between us shifting to from a calendar year, we were looking to be self-sustaining in our original filing with the government, December 2023. Because of COVID, that slid some things back. I do not anticipate us needing to come before council again. Our goal with these community events now, and with, for instance, like the disc golf tournament and another event, which we're in active discussion of doing, it would be a big event, but later in 2023, our goal is to not come back to the town for any financial support.
And the reason I'm asking is that we do give you money in this past year and, and the previous years. It's over half the budget is for audit services. So we don't get the bang for the buck. We're giving you money that actually goes for audit services. So if you are self-reliant, then it really, really helps and we actually save. And I assume that y'all have to perform your own audit as a 501(c).
Correct. But yes, not to the extent that we were all surprised when that bill came up. I think it was late last year, we went, oh, really? Because of town support. And that's one of the reasons that we also want to get out. And I said not get out, it's not the correct word, but we want to be able to step away from needing that support. So that money isn't going to an audit that can be used for something else.
Yes, thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. I've got a question, or two questions. One, when you guys are meeting, is it just once a month? It's when you have guest speaker meetings in the morning or there are other meetings that you guys are having?
The general meeting is the third, the fourth Thursday of the month in A D M. And then we have the after-hours function.
How has your participation been those weeks?
Since we came back and meeting, it's not as strong as it was before COVID. And that's part of our challenge is to rebuild that.
And then the last question I have for you, if a new business is coming in town, do you actively have somebody trying to reach out to them or are you relying on them to reach out to you guys? How does that relationship get built?
Part of us, part of our coordination with the town is to be made aware from the EDC department of the new businesses and then we reach out and make an invitation to them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that this evening. At this time, let me introduce the public comment portion of our agenda this evening. Anyone wishing to address the town council may be so during this time. Please state your name and address for the record, be courteous and do not repeat what has already been said. And please keep your comments about the subject and not personal in nature. We do have at least three people that signed up on the signup sheet out. So we will take those that are in person first and then we will go to anyone that would like to speak on the Zoom call. First up, I believe it's John Paul.
Yeah, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm just introducing myself. I'm not a resident of Harrisburg. I live in Concord.
Can you state your name and address?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
My name, my name is John Paul and I live in Concord, 4817. And I just wanted to introduce myself. I know you, you know, it's not time for political stump speeches or whatever, but I shop in Harrisburg. My daughter has been living in Harrisburg for about five years. And many members of my congregation that are residents of Harrisburg. And I've always enjoyed the atmosphere every, almost every year. Drink kids and grandkids to the Fourth of July event. So I appreciate, you know, all the things you've done for the town of Harrisburg. And the main reason why I'm involved in this political process is to see true conservatives at the helm of the county. And I would, I would, I would seek to join other individuals who are true conservatives and have strong leadership to take a impact on the county. I think what was demonstrated with the COVID scheme, that we've had heavy-handedness from all three levels of government. And very few people stood up for our constitutional rights. And that's one of the main things that I'll, that has put me in this position to serve the people of Harris County. Up for lower taxes and I support all levels of law enforcement. And what the gentleman was just speaking about business and the devastation of that situation that brought small business to me was appalling. Actually, in my perspective, it was immoral what they did to small businesses. So that's why I'm in this race and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Thanks for having Ray Helm.
I'd like to first say, I just want to talk about the, I know this is something y'all do in private, the beer and wine that's going to be looked at apart. And the greatest God is, not everybody agrees with what he says or wants. And I'm sympathetic to, y'all are not going to satisfy every group of people that comes before you and says, I want this or I don't want this. So I understand that. But what I would like to say is as long as I can remember, parks have been considered and treated a lot different than any other establishment. It's where families and children go. And I think that they just need to be exposed to, it's less, it's what they're exposed to outside of the park. And let it be more natural, just where people can come and just enjoy what's there without bringing other things in. I'm not against the people that want it. But I do think that we should just leave it just like it is. And I would just ask you to consider that when you do that. I remember when smoking was taken out of restaurants. Not everybody liked that. The ones that didn't smoke loved it. But everybody understood after a while, it was just something that was needed to be done. But it didn't satisfy everybody, but everybody adjusted. And I think that everybody would adjust just fine if it isn't done. But if you do it and then you have to turn around and undo it, you've got a whole lot bigger problem. So it's just better to not enter into it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ray, can you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's Ray Helm. I'm from Rosslyn Church Road in Harrisburg. I'm in the county part, but the city's touchable to me.
Okay, Mr. Helm. Appreciate that. Last week, I've signed up on our list is Pastor Jordan. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Mr. Roland Joy. Still 134 Wall Street, Concord, Harris County, native, I would say. The rich and Jesus name, I realize this is hate here. But me as being in ministry, I have to reach you with love. That's my job. Praise God. I know a lot of property haters, that's okay too, but you got to be Jesus. I asked George Hart a long time ago, can I call them white people? He said, yeah, you call them white people. So what? You call me black people. But I stand here for all people. And in your vision, you should have all people, because you got different races here, coming from different places. But I stand here tonight for, actually for the scripture, Dr. Martin Luther King. Now, I gave him a good, good example. I don't look like a dumb man. I know that, but I'm wisdom man. Forty-nine. Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard. Still forty-nine, still put forty-nine up there. Easy. Praise God. What's the problem? He got it. Knappus finally got it. Probably took about ten years. Concord, Manhattan. The pressure stayed on them. Put a gag on them. God said, we're going to have it. But the problem is, our white brothers and sisters, you need to get together. That man died for peace. And we still got peace. I'm not like Dr. King. I'm on peace, but I'm a warrior. I'm military. I believe in killing. I believe in self-defense. But I stand here tonight to let you know, praise God, Abraham Lincoln, Mr. Kennedy. Them brothers died helping black people in other ways. Praise God. Now it's up to you if you want to help my people. But I guarantee you, God gonna make a way. Regardless, I hope they're gonna have them be with you. We've got another meeting to go to. God bless.
Thank you, Pastor Jordan. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak before we move to those long Zoom calls that maybe didn't have a chance to sign up? Is there anyone on that Zoom that would like to speak during public comments?
As you know, yes, Mayor.
Somebody raise your hand.
We do have a Benji. Layman.
Sir Layman, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
This is Benji Layman with the Isaacs Group, 8720 Red Oak Boulevard.
Mr. Layman, you're breaking up. Mr. Layman, if you can hear me, we can't.
Is this any better?
Yes, that is better. Thank you.
Okay. Did you get, catch my address? Eighty-seven twenty?
Go ahead. You can repeat it.
Okay. Eighty-seven twenty, Red Oak Boulevard, Charlotte, North Carolina.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to hop on. I, I'm representing DRB Group and the Isaacs Group. It's the Robinson Church site that was pulled from the consent agenda. So I just thought I'd make myself available to answer any questions regarding that project.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Layman. We move back to new business. So as long as you're on the call, if there's any questions that come up, then we'll call on you then.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom call that would like to speak during public comments? I think that concludes this portion. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have in fact pulled out item H and moved that to sixty. That was done at the beginning of the agenda adoption. But is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda?
Motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion is carried. We will move into our town manager and finance updates.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Anybody here, okay? I have a few updates from our previous meeting before we turn it over to finance, buyer and employees. We had a request from a resident at 602 Autumn Lane about a business use and property use at the meeting. Our planning department has reached out to them and answered that question. It was about whether their neighbor can use a property for a certain purpose. That's handled and, and that resident satisfied with the result. Lucas Court is a project that came up at the last meeting about as far as the status update. I think you've all received an email as well, but just for anybody that was a tenant to that meeting, I give a quick update that our engineering department is currently securing right-of-way from the resident's outfit. So we, we've hired the survey professionals to develop that plat and our engineering teams and communication, basically getting that to the next step. And once we have secured all the signatures, then we'll be awarded the traction. Harmony Roundabout, we had a question from one of the esteemed council people at the table here about. table here about several projects. Harmony Roundabout is looking at a summer start date to begin construction on that. They will operate out of their current entrance, which most people have seen. They'll finish that as a T intersection until the roundabout is done. It won't be connecting to the adjacent neighborhoods until, until that is operational. You should expect that in summer. Any questions?
So the roundabout summer, the cut through to the neighborhood, it's not until?
That'd be at a later phase.
So you're gonna talk about the school roundabout too? Okay, well, then I can ask the questions once you answer that one, then I'll come back to this one.
Good segment. So Camilla Gardens Roundabout, that one is scheduled for fall. There is utility relocation up on that. So they're still having a hard time getting utilities out of the way. Late summer, early fall is when they're anticipating that and all the utilities clear in order for that construction.
And if they go in the fall, it's not during school hours or is it not during?
Right. So they, they planned on going with restricted hours and under traffic. So there will always be traffic controlled there. So they'll be partial with and keep two lanes of traffic open when they're not flagging.
That's how we're keeping roundabout.
Yep. And, and I mean anticipate, you know, Harmony would like to do theirs under closure, but I don't think that's gonna be possible for, for that as well. Those plans are not completely approved at this point, but based on their plating schedule and, and wanting to get vertical in there, if, if that is their plan, I would anticipate that having to be done under traffic.
So they'll both be, both be going on at the same time?
Yeah.
No. So they anticipate having raging done completed before they start the school?
So, so that is the plan is to do Harmony?
Asking it specifically.
If they are done under traffic, they could both be going on at the same time. Could, they're not permitted to have closures at the same time.
Okay. So Harmony cannot go vertical until the roundabout is completely built, true or false? So that means they can't, they can't start building or start selling until the roundabout is built?
They can do on the town standard. Now, I won't speak to NCPT because they have a say as well. It's their road and their roundabout. But the town standard is they can get thirty lots in, but they couldn't get the roundabout in. So they have to have the roundabout in by, by thirty one. So they could do phase one, they could do thirty, but then they would have to keep that entrance open the whole time that they're building that roundabout. That's where I said they may, I don't know that they're scheduled to do it under closure, but they cannot go past thirty without the roundabout in. Because they, they need that to operate.
Okay. So the line that's scheduled to go in at the end of Stalin's Road and Rocky River, that can't occur or will not occur until when?
That is next on the list. So they're submitting construction documents this month. So I would assume that would be like a fall timeframe for them, but that would be tied to, it's, it's not tied to a phase in their plan, but we normally tie that to about the fifty percent mark.
Fifty percent mark.
Yeah. Some offsite, something that's not directly tied to their site is usually at that fifty percent. We now, now as we do those TIA's, we actually call out which phase that those are gonna be done, but if you recall, like Holcomb and Grandtham, some of these neighborhoods that it was left unsaid, we hold it to the, to the fifty percent.
So with Camilla Gardens, the roundabout has to be done before they start any of the homes?
Their roundabout, I'd have to look back exactly to see what it's tied to. I think their roundabout has the same issue is they only have the one entrance. So I think it has to be done before they can plant.
Okay. So for everybody that's listening, welcome them to the update. They certainly appreciate it. Next year this time, both roundabouts should be done and completed in constructions of homes and should be done.
Of course, we said that two years ago.
Right. But that's, that's the plan now.
But that is, yeah, I, I would be surprised if their schedule slides anymore because those projects have slipped their schedule so much with COVID and based on housing inventory in Harrisburg, they, they need to get houses up.
Thank you.
You bet. You had another request at the last meeting, which was the housing, the approved house numbers that Lee was keeping a spreadsheet on it and sending out. So we've looked at where and how that's gonna end up on the website. We will put that somewhere and we may have already, I don't know if you had any involvement with that. I know we've already started that process, but as you guys know, be a little bit of a staff issue, which comes at the end of this report, but that is something in the works. It's just how we want that to look, where it's gonna live on the website, but we will put those housing approval numbers.
Right. And can you kind of share with those listening on the, on the call and in person tonight, what those numbers will tell the, the residents of Harrisburg?
Right. So this will be a chart of some sort. We're not sure which, what type of chart, but the data will ultimately, you'll be able to go to it and look and see all of the subdivisions that have been approved. We will have to probably put a period of time on that because there are subdivisions, let's say that were approved, you know, forty years ago that never got, never got built. And they may just be land subdivisions and not really houses. But I think what we're gonna look at is based on the data that we keep now, going back to when we started tracking this, you'll be able to look and see what subdivision was approved, when it was approved, and then how many houses were approved in that and whether or not they didn't, where they're at in the phase. So, you know, Holcomb, for example, you go on there, it's saying this rezoning was approved this date, here's how many houses were approved. And, you know, four hundred and eighty of the five hundred and twelve homes have been constructed as of this date. And we'll kind of keep that as a, maybe a quarterly update or something along those lines.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
You bet. We also have another question about the bicycle accident in, in town center, which again, I sent an email to everybody. We did look into that. There wasn't a direct lighting related component to, to that accident, but nonetheless, it was anecdotal to the, to the issues that we have out there. So what we've done is we've hired an electrician to, on all of the outages that we have anticipating no bot lights being done and us being able to tie those in and get everything working so that we have a good cost estimate once that's all ready. Our engineering department's also looking into ownership issue. Once we do identify what needs fixed and what the cost is, who owns them, we're responsible for paying them long-term, as well as our engineering department looking into any additional lighting. Once we get those all illuminated and we're able to see these at night, we may make recommendations as well and say, hey, maybe we need more intersection lighting near percent tap. Maybe we'll do a code runs, just something I can anticipate having me get taller code light at, at some of her major intersections and bring those back to council. So just an update there. Also, a moment ago, COVID update. You seem to be doing really well with COVID until this week. I think, I, I hope it's a blip and more of an issue with the town and not something that is more widespread, but council have seen in a manager's report that our counting numbers ticked up a little bit, hoping that's kind of an anomaly since the numbers are so small overall. But currently we have five employees of town who are out with COVID and another seven who are on COVID protocol of some sort, be it quarantined at home or, or masking and attending as I am tonight. So just something to know, that's, that's twelve people, ten percent of our workforce. So there, there will be some things over the next, you know, week, week and a half. So from a resident standpoint, as you're calling into customer service and council standpoint, just know we're dealing with that issue and, and everybody so far is, is doing well, but you know, hope to get everybody healthy and back to work soon. And I, one more update, just based on the email I've received today, I've not had a chance to respond to resident or council yet, but there was a presentation of some sort anticipated by a resident. That may be a miscommunication on my end. I, I will respond to that email in, in writing, but we had a request to my office just to give an update on a stormwater complaint. I did tell a council member, you know, I'll get back and I'll get you an update by the next meeting. I, I think that was probably taken as more of a formal presentation at this meeting, but I don't plan to bring individual resident complaints and do, you know, clog up your meetings with those. I'll, I'll, we'll respond to those directly to the resident. So he'll be hearing something tomorrow to tidy that up. But if anybody has any questions in the meantime, please let me know. And that's all I had for the, the updates tonight. Any questions, council? They packed house tonight. They aboard everybody to sleep out there.
Well, since you were talking about development, you did ask, can I go ahead and throw in the courtyard at Tom Query and Robinson Church? Got any update on that?
And I'll, I'll go from memory, so I'll, I'll, you know, taking notes on it, but that project has submitted construction documents. They also have the offsite improvement at, at Tom Query Robinson Church where there is a bit of a hangup. So that's, that's where they're kind of in a delay. They have separated those designs, but they're relying upon each other. You can't move forward with the construction of the neighborhood until you have approval for the signal. So the signal isn't completely approved. I think they're in the same boat that we've been in on many of our projects where costs have spiraled up. It's more than anticipated and they're trying to figure that gap out if it's responsible for the over.
Do you happen to know anything on sales call? And while we're talking about development, go ahead and talk to the rumor that is out there about Orchard Ridge development of the four hundred and seventy-nine homes, fifty-nine homes that is on Robinson Church, you know, out amongst residents. The word is they can't attain sewer rights, so the developer has pulled out. Can you give the residents an update on that, please?
Yeah, do the best I can on that as well. Again, going, going from memory, so you know, if I misspeak, I'll ask pre forgiveness for that, but that project is still in design. They are in construction documents and they have not notified the town that they don't plan to move forward with that. I do know that the home builder associated with that developer, to my understanding, is not moving forward and they, they, the assumption is they will have another builder that is not that builder. Do the same site plan. If there is some substantial change to that, obviously that comes back to the town council to, to review. Based on our conversations, that is, that is not in play. We have not been involved with any stags on sewer easement acquisition problems. Normally if that comes up, the developer does reach out for engineering staff to see what options they have or if they can be assistance that, that wasn't requested by the town. So as far as I know, it could be that as the issue or it could be any myriad of internal builder decisions, why DRF is no longer the builder and somebody else will.
Thank you.
Any other wild matters?
Gone once, on twice.
Okay. And due to, due to some COVID issues and quarantine issues, I think Brian is virtual tonight and I appreciate him popping up here with us to, so I didn't have to do this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You have to unmute yourself down here. So I've got your finance report for the month of March and your project dashboard as well. So beginning with the revenue and expense dashboard, this is all the operational revenues and expenditures, beginning with the general fund. It is up to ninety-four percent as of March 31st and tax collections are right above a hundred percent as of the end of the month. So really good collections, both tax collections and in the general fund overall at the seventy-five percent mark of the fiscal year. The water and sewer fund, as well as the stormwater fund have both ticked up to seventy-five percent, up ten and nine percent respectively. So both of those funds right on target as we would expect as well and making up for those lesser months throughout the winter. Departmental expenditures for operations for the general government departments are all in the green, one in the yellow, and that's finance. We paid out, we settled up on our audit fees as well as a server migration for our financial software. So those big expenses hit us this month and should level back out for the rest of the fiscal year, but all other departments are in great shape right now. The rest of the general fund departments are all in green. We have no concerns here. The highest that we see is seventy-two percent at the fire department. So all these departments are in great shape here. Water and sewer is at fifty-seven percent and stormwater down at thirty-nine percent. So no concerns on both of our enterprise funds there. And salaries townwide are at seventy-one percent, up ten percent this month. Now we'll jump into our project dashboard. Now, there's a couple of projects I'd like to call your attention to here on our single year projects. First, the deputy office expansion. That new mobile office building has been installed. It's been connected with utilities. It's a very nice, very nice building for them and the staff right now is working on the interior finishes to get that building up and running. The spring paving contract you showed starting at five percent at the end of March and that is being presented to council for approval at tonight's meeting. That was on the consent agenda. So that project will get going in the next month or so. Harris Depot, Harris Depot Post Office Rehab is still at sixty percent, but we do have a little progress to report. The concrete for the sidewalk, the parking area, some electrical work and the roof replacement have all been completed. The foundation and crawl space work is going on right now as well as painting. And so that should pretty much wrap up that post office rehab within the next month or two. The town hall ADA project has kicked off recently. Show it at about twenty percent complete right now. And then the ADA sidewalk program has been moved to officially complete and I showed you some pictures of some of those sidewalk improvements throughout town in previous For our multi-year projects in design, some typical progress here. We did add three transportation bond projects to begin tracking individually. So you see those at sidewalks for Hickory Ridge Road, the Highway forty-nine corridor plan implementation and the Rocky River Greenway project. So as those contracts come before you and, and are hopefully approved, we'll start to see some motion on the design of those projects. We also moved the Sequoia Hills and Far Mill Waterline Loop to complete and bids for construction will be opened in April for that. Our multi-year projects that are under construction, the Caldwell Road Sidewalk Project, which is a transportation bond project, is at ninety-five percent, should be wrapped up very soon. In the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two water lines, those bids were opened in March and the contract is on the consent agenda as well. And so that is at ninety-eight percent now. This is looking at our equipment projects. These are all complete and they were actually complete last month as well. So we have one project that's on hold. All the rest are complete, so we'll fly right by the equipment projects. The vehicle projects, we are down to just our fire vehicles that are all in the sixty to seventy-five percent range. Those are getting their accessories and should be placed into service pretty soon. I do want to draw your attention to the new ladder truck. We've gotten a few pictures of that as it comes down the manufacturing line. So you can see it there before any sort of paint or finish. The middle picture, starting to get some finishes both on the inside and a nice paint coat there. And then of course, some more accessories being added in, in the third picture there. But pretty beautiful truck there and I'll keep you updated on any progress that we get from the manufacturing line on that. And this is a look at our professional services projects. Our three that were active this year are all complete. And as Councilman Patrick mentioned earlier tonight, the Harrisburg retail recruitment study is on hold and will be brought back as soon as the environment is better for that. Couple other updates in the finance department. We're working with SAB on utility billing. We're trying to convert our customers from paper to electronic delivery. So we're looking for some ideas. So we're looking for some ideas from S A B to move forward on that. The fiscal year twenty twenty two audit schedule has been finalized and we're starting to work with the new audit firm on on that field work. So both working on our interim schedule right now and then making sure that our final schedule is also nailed down. For your monthly ARPA update, there's been no change here, so we still sit at just over four and a half million remaining to appropriate. An outlook for the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget season, we've completed all of the draft one budget workshops throughout February and March. We completed our draft two workshop on April fourth. And our upcoming budget workshops are for council priorities and the budget exercise review tomorrow night at six o'clock. And then, if needed, the manager's recommended budget preview meeting will be held on April twenty seventh, also at six o'clock. And that is all I have. I'm glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Brian, this is Captain Dillinger. Just for those that are on the call and in person, will you remind them what S A B stands for and what ARPA stands for? As we have a bunch of people on the call.
Absolutely. The S A B is the Sustainability Advisory Board. And then the ARPA is the American Rescue. You know what? I'm drawing a blank on that. Recovery, yeah, Recovery Plan Act. I'm sorry. Thank you for that.
Thanks, Brian.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yes, that would be me. So getting mayor, council, Sergeant Edwards, for those of you that do not know me. For the month of March, we did have three thousand five hundred ninety three law enforcement related activities. Two thousand three hundred eighty security checks where we wrote through businesses or neighborhoods or something like that. We did perform four hundred thirty seven traffic stops. And our non emergency, that's not running license siree drop, just like Christians every day. Our non emergency response time for the month was eight minutes, six seconds. So Brian Lee mentioned that we. Expansion projects going pretty well. We are about seventy to eighty percent in the building. So y'all are more than welcome to come by anytime and we'll take a look to what we've done. So y'all have any questions?
Thank you, Sergeant Edwards.
Answer any questions before I get started. Alrighty, for the month of March, we responded to two hundred and five incidents. Just some of the highlights, eight of those were structural fires. National Fire Lawrence was twelve, residential fire lawrence was fourteen. Motor vehicle accidents with injuries was twelve and one of those was a. Our average response time last month went down from prior months or four minutes fifty one seconds. The ladder truck out of Station One continues to be the busiest at for us. Some of the other highlights that we participated in or. Training that took place this this month was we completed a driver operators aerial class. Our annual higher testing has began. I guess you've seen that. Good job playing that out there. We completed our annual physicals. There's a N F A class, national. National Leadership Class going on CPR protocol test was completed. I think first responders night at Hickory Ridge baseball was was completed. I think some of our guys sent a third girls. We completed a first aid class at the Harrisburg Presbyterian Church. For the for the boys camp. So I think that was actually Connor's group that he's involved with. So. Some of the activities that were involved.
Any questions for Chief Dan?
Oh, just quick update. I think everything's in place for the for the houses that that are on that property. So we're just waiting on. A date and we're anticipating right first of May, so about two weeks, but we'll keep everybody.
Just a couple of things for mayor's comments. We did have the ribbon cutting ceremony for the pump track at Harrisburg Park that was called on March twenty ninth. There were several council members that were there. For those that are unfamiliar with what a pump track is, as I was. It is a skills course for mountain BMX bikes and it is the only track in Cabarrus County. So I wanted to give a thanks to our council, our Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Our deputy town manager, Lee Connor, our Parks and Rec Director, Jim Cena, our Park Superintendent, Adam Abernathy. And our former Parks and Rec Advisory Board member, Jason Marshall, for their vision, support and execution of this great addition to the county. I also had the privilege of volunteering at the Special Olympics at the Cabarrus County Games last week. It was definitely well spent. I posted a couple of pictures. There's nothing like seeing those kids. They were awfully excited to be in person that had been postponed, obviously because of the pandemic. So looking forward to many more of our community leaders coming out to that event next year. With that, we will move into council comments. Are there any council comments this evening?
Hey, Mayor, I do have two comments. So I did have the opportunity on March twenty sixth with members from the youth council. To take part in the Big Brother Big Sister Bowling fundraiser. We had a great time with that. And then later on that afternoon, I was a participant at the eighteenth annual Peggy Freeman Fleming Sisterhood Luncheon. Sponsored by the Concord Alumni Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. And if for those of you who don't know, Peggy Freeman Fleming was is the late sister of our previous county commissioner, Robert Freeman. During that luncheon, the team there said that they had reached out to. Get a welcome from the town and did not receive.
Austin, can you repeat? I'm sorry, you went blank for a minute. We couldn't hear that far.
Which piece?
Stop two and then it stopped.
So during the luncheon, members from the committee, the planning committee for the luncheon. Said to me that they did not receive any feedback. They had emailed twice to the town and to the mayor. To receive a welcome and did not get any information back. This is the second time that I've heard that 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 no response has been given to to some people. So is there a process, Rob, that we could put in place for the website? For any individuals wanting to request leadership from the town, come to an event. Or have a proclamation or a letter or any of those type of things on the website to go automatically to someone else? Because it could have been lost in people's email. I don't know. But I'm all about process improvement and it seems like this is a process that needs to be improved upon.
And we can, we can definitely add. I guess so, make it more obvious where where those should go. For those that are cold calling, they might not be getting to the right person or might be getting lost in the shuffle. And we prefer those to go through communications and then if it's something formal like the mayor or. Or a town manager or somebody to to attend something. We like those to either go through customer service or communications. That way, you know, Lee can can decide is this. Where does this go? Is it a is it a mayor? Is it a deputy? Is it a town manager type thing? That way we're getting the right right person there. And getting ultimately it to the person that's going to schedule it or whoever's, you know, attend. So let me, let me look to see what. What methods they're going through now. I know that typically those there there isn't like a gateway. They generally just call the town or they find an email that they think might be right. So it might contain old council people or old mayor. Previous town manager, something like that. I'll look into those specifically, but yeah, we'll get a process set up.
Thank you.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but talking about that, is there any way we can get rid of the old emails? Because part of the process maybe here is that people may be sending it to emails and they don't get a bounce back. So they think the email was good and still in play for previous council members or previous mayors or whatever, or previous staff members even. So could we maybe clean up the email boxes? Because I've looked in there and I see a lot of old ones in there.
Yep, we'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any public hearings this evening, so with that, we will move into all the business. Our first item of floor discussion is the consideration of a conditional rezoning and annexation request to add a portion of the parcel to modify the previously approved farming.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me well?
Yes, thank you, Cecile.
Thank you, Mayor. So the first all business item in front of you tonight is to consider a rezoning and annexation request. To add a portion of parcel to modify the previously approved Farmington Putt. The case number here is H twenty twenty one thirteen R. And we had held a public hearing for this matter at the last meeting and tonight is not a public hearing, but but an action item for you to consider. So the request is to rezonate a portion of the parcel listed there, total one point five five seven acres. Located at Farmington Ridge Parkway, just north of Rocky River Road. The intent here is to amend the previously approved Farmington Putt associated with case number H twenty nineteen O two R. Property to be added is currently in the county. That's why we have annexation and rezoning. Action together for your consideration tonight. The current zoning on the property is O I Office Institutional. The requested rezoning to match the Farmington Putt is P U D itself. You can see, again, this this was, I'm presenting the same information that was presented to during public hearing. So if I'm rushing through some of this, and if you have any questions, please, please stop me and ask those. So what you see on the screen is the location map. On the top right corner, you can see the general overview of where the property is. The blue sated area is the corporate boundary of town of Harrisburg. On the left hand side, the diamond safe red parcel is what we are requesting to be annexed into the putt and and rezoned and classify as as P U D. This is another view of that parcel, a little bit closer look. You can see the the boundary of the P U D itself that expands into Mecklenburg County. And you can see where that blue diamond is in relation to the overall putt and how it how it. How the how the boundary will be amended once once that diamond piece is added into the previous previous P U D. This item is also related to the next item that's coming up for your action. It's twenty twenty one fourteen R. So we'll talk about that, but that action will be removing one point three eight acres from the previously approved P U D. This item that you see on the blue sated area will be adding the one point five five seven acres. Those are interrelated. But we had to do two different actions because one does not require annexation. Going back to how does this fit with our adopted land use plan? So you can see on the map, the the red store is where the property is. This is what we call our mixed use center, Node C, intended for a very, very high density mix of retail, restaurant, office. And all kind of uses that that kind of makes sense to put together, horizontal, vertical, you name it. That's where the Farmington Putt is intended to go. The uses permitted by right that was approved in the previous P U D will transfer over as this is approved or when it is approved by the council. All the entitlements, uses, standards, everything that was with the previous P U D will be transferred over to that diamond safe parcel. The rezoning amendment modifies the overall boundary, but it does not change any other uses or any any development type. So everything remains the same. We're simply changing the boundary to add a small portion of of the parcel to bring into the P U D. In exchange of one going out, which which is the next agenda item. We held a neighborhood meeting for this rezoning and annexation request on November eighteen of twenty twenty one. As I stated earlier, the proposed rezoning site plan amendment is consistent with our H E L O. For mixed use centers and also meet the standards of the U D F. This was presented to the planning board at their February fifteenth. Twenty twenty two meeting and received recommendation to be approved by the council. As I noted earlier, the public hearing for both annexation and rezoning was held at the March fourteenth meeting. At this point, planning and zoning department staff recommends approval of rezoning request. Edge twenty twenty one thirteen R and associated annexation for the portion of parcel listed there. The total acreage is one point five five seven acres. With that, I will give it back to the mayor for any questions we may have for the staff.
Thank you, Cecile. Counsel, are there any additional questions that you have for Cecile this evening? And with that, is there a motion on the floor to approve the annexation and conditional resending request? That's requested by the applicant.
So moved.
Thank you, Austin. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Rich, would you like to provide us with a consistency statement this evening?
Based on the application, it's been submitted to the town and the staff report and the staff of. Report and the staff and presentation, I'm sorry. And with the conditions stated in the staff report, this rezoning is consistent with the provisions of the Parry Parry Area Land Use Plan. And is reasonable and in public interest.
Thank you, Rich. Is there a motion to approve the consistency statement that's proposed? So moved. Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. I to be. Again, we'll bring Cecile back for that piece. It's the consideration of resending request to remove a portion of the parcel and modify the previously approved Farmington Putt.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So again, as I stated earlier, the previous action item and this this action item, it's twenty twenty one fourteen R. Are interrelated. Were in the previous action, you added a portion of the parcel. In this requested action, we'll be removing a portion of previously approved P U D and taking it out of the P U D. To assign the town a different zoning classification. So the request is to take take out one point three eight acres from the previously approved P U D. Twenty twenty nineteen O two R. The property to be removed is currently in the town limits and will remain as such. So we're not taking it out of the town. We're not de annexing the property. The current zoning, as I stated, is P U D and the requested conditional zoning for that property is O I Office Institutional. And this is similar map that was presented previously. The the top right, again, you can see the same location map. On the lower left, you can see the red area highlighted there. That is part of the previously approved P U D, which will be taken out and removed from the P U D once the action is approved tonight. Another view of the properties is to give you that overview of where the property is. Again, that blue parcel you already took action to add into the P U D. The green will be taking taking the property out, a portion of P U D, one point three acres out and and assigning a zoning classification of O I. Going back to the land use recommendations, I don't want to repeat myself, but it's it's again, it fits what is intended for the area for mixed use center. All of the uses that were permitted by right under prescribed conditions, together with accessory uses. As allowed in the P U D will be removed, since it will no longer be the P U D for that one point three eight acres. Those conditions and everything that was a part of the P U D will be removed and the property will be in down the line. If the property owner wants to do anything, it will be under the O I classification if the rezoning is approved tonight. The this rezoning amendment, again, as I noted, modifies the boundary. There is no change to the P U D itself. It just takes the portion of that P U D out, but overall intent of the P U D remains the same. We held a neighborhood meeting together with that first item on November eighteen. We held a neighborhood meeting together with that first item on November 18. The proposed amendment and taking off the property is still in alignment with the mixed-use center and does not change the intent of the Farmington P U D. This was presented to the planning board on February 15 and received recommendation that council consider approving the rezoning request. We held a public hearing last month on March 14. With that, staff is recommending that we approve the rezoning request. It's 2021 14 R. With that, back to you, Mayor, for any questions you may have for me.
Thank you, Cecile. Counsel, are there any questions before we move to a motion? Is there a motion on the floor to approve rezoning request for the P U D as requested by the applicant for the rate-related property and application H 2021 14? Thank you, Maurice. Is there a second? Thank you, Ron. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Motionist Carrie. Rich, I will look to you again for a consistency statement.
Thank you, Mayor. This one will be a little bit different because we don't have any conditions. To be based on the application and the staff report and presentation, this rezoning is consistent with the provisions of the Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan and is reasonable and in the public interest.
Thank you, Rich. Counsel, is there a motion to approve the consistency statement as proposed? Is there a second? Thank you, Maurice. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, the motion is carried. Our next item up is the consideration of rezoning and annexation of two parcels off of Paul Linker Place associated with the annexation request. Cecile, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. We got pretty quick, small items back-to-back today. So the next request in front of you is to rezone two parcels. These are existing parcel, existing lots off of Farmill Road, off of Paul Linker Place. Those two parcels are listed there on your screen. The intent of the property owner to be annexed into the town is to access town sewer services. And to annex the property into the town, we have to assign a town's zoning classification, which is why there is a combined request of rezoning and annexation. The current zoning in the county is low-density residential. The requested zoning here is residential low-density, which is equivalent of the same classification of what what the county designation is from a density and zoning classification standard. Again, this map shows you where the property is on the top right in relation to the corporate boundary of town of Harrisburg. As you can see, there is no corporate boundary nearby, so this is a non-contiguous annexation. On the left is the little closer look of those two parcels in relation to Farmill Road and Paul Linker Place. This is just another view of those two par- taking. Going back. Go ahead. Was there a question?
You just cut out on the end. We could turn the last one back.
Oh, sorry about that. So going back to the future land use designation from our HELOP, as you can see on the star there, that green area is very low-density residential. This is pretty much intended for rural, low-density subdivision. We do allow some a little bit higher, closer to two or somewhere one and a half units per acre if there is a conservation design standards for bigger subdivision. In this case, it is not a subdivision, as I mentioned. We're simply taking an existing parcel, annexing into the town limits and assigning our zoning classification. So how does it translate to, from a land use, very low-density residential to the appropriate zoning district? So you can see on the map, RL is one of the recommended district and the request is is to reason to residential low-density, which is consistent with the land use plan. This did not require a neighborhood meeting, but as I indicated earlier, it is consistent with what we have adopted and also meets the U D O from law dimension and density requirements. This was presented to the planning board on February 15 and received recommendation that council, the town council, consider approving it. Staff is recommending approval of the request of rezoning and annexation. And we held a public hearing at the last meeting as well. With that, back to you, Mayor, for any questions.
Thank you, Cecile. Are there any questions before we move to a motion? Is there a motion on the floor to approve the annexation and rezoning request from the county load and see residential to residential load is density as requested by the applicant for the related property and application H 2022?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, all team. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, the motion is carried. Last one for the evening, Rich, consistency statement.
Thank you, Mayor. This one, based on the application and the staff presentation report, this rezoning is consistent with the provisions of the Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan and is reasonable and in the public interest.
Thank you, Rich. Is there a motion to approve the consistency statement as proposed? Ron, thank you. Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, the motion is carried. Our last piece under all business this evening is the consideration of changes to the Harrisburg Code of Ordinances. This was based on the state law changes that Rich presented last time. Is there anything else to add to that, Rich?
Nothing else. If anybody has questions about it.
Are there any questions for Rich? On the Code of Ordinance changes to meet state law changes? If there are no questions, is there a motion to approve the changes to the Harrisburg Code of Ordinance as presented?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Ron. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rodney. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Counsel. The motion has passed. Again, we have moved the transportation project update to next month. So with that, we will move into all the business. Our first item is consideration of guidelines for the events requesting beer and wine sales in Harrisburg Park.
Good evening, Counsel. Hi.
Hi, Jim.
Can you hear me? Good evening, everybody. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person for this presentation, but COVID caught up to me as well, so. Anyways, so thank you, James, for getting that teed up for me. Last fall. Next slide, please, James. Last fall, Counsel, we had a request from an outside event that wanted to have alcohol potentially in an event inside Harrisburg Park. And so we had a discussion about that, and in the process of that discussion, I was requested that we develop a policy that would provide guidelines for future requests from outside parties to sell and serve beer and wine at event stage in Harrisburg Park. And with that, our staff at Parks and Rec set a goal to develop the policy such that all events, including those sponsored by the town, could follow the same guidelines, allowing for consistency and approach. Next, please, James. And it was with that that we came up with some guidelines to help give us a better read on whether it's an appropriate opportunity for that event at the time. And this hopefully will set us up that we can just move forward upon each request based on these guidelines. And what we came up with was that the request to sell must come 90 days in advance and at the same time as the event request. We didn't want any piggybacks or all of a sudden throw-ins. We said beer and wine only with no liquor and no exceptions. In regards to youth activities in Harrisburg Park, prior to the start of the event, all youth sports and events must be completed for the day and the splash pad must be closed. Next slide, please. Thank you. Third-party handling of sales only. That means, you know, whether it be a local brewery, a local tap house, bar, restaurant that has the proof of liability and the North Carolina ABC Special Events Permit required for them. So we would not allow event organizers to handle that themselves. The event organizers must also produce a certificate of insurance provided with the town listed as additionally insured. And the event layout would be required while in advance. I think we said 90 days in advance, so we have plenty of time to go through it with them, work with the event organizers, making sure that the area is clearly defined and that there would be a separate ID station. You know, so we could monitor the age appropriateness and those coming through. And again, and that ID station has got to be monitored by event personnel issuing wristbands that clearly identify those who may legally purchase and consume beer and wine during that event. The organizers also must provide personnel, a minimum of two, to monitor perimeter of sales and consumption area. Signs must be erected that clearly state no alcohol beyond this point, and it must be utilized at points of access to sales and consumption area. Security, security would be mandatory coordination with Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department and the Harrisburg Fire Marshal. The town has the right to accept or reject any application. And something we thought important, as I stated earlier, is that town events would follow these same exact requirements with the exception of the application process and the proof of insurance requirements because we know we have that insurance to cover our events already as well as the application process that we would control anyways. And I actually downloaded the actual policy. This PowerPoint just brought out the main points. But thank you for letting me present, and I will honor any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Jim. And just to be clear, we were already selling alcohol at previous events, but council had requested more of a policy structure to evaluate to make sure we were dotting out and crossing teeth. So are there any questions for Jim?
Well, this is Councilman Delinger. So we have a new council that is different from the previous council, and I have spoken on this matter before. So there are members out there listening in the audience and online. I just want to restate for this council and everyone listening that beer and wine sales are not for a venue that is built for children. Just because you have a wiped-off area does not mean you have it under control. Today, it is just for beer and wine sales. Tomorrow, you will add liquor sales. Once you start putting something in place, it inches it, it inches it, it inches it to the next thing. What will then would be the next item, and I said it this fall, will it be a cannabis station? Once the state decides to approve that, this is a place for children. Our park and recs department is busy enough providing support for your children, and they do not need to be able to need to monitor, be a policy monitor for beer and wine sales. For those following the budget workshops, you will know that the park and rec department is requesting that amphitheater start to be rented hourly. I'm concerned by adding beer and wine sales to events alongside hourly sales, as this could be a problem waiting to occur. This yields to another discussion with beer and wine sales and the use of the green room and hourly rental rates. I will not concentrate here on the combination of beer and wine sales and hourly rate rentals. That's for another discussion, so let's just move on. We have constantly heard that the town center needs foot traffic, but yet we want to push foot traffic for events with beer and wine sales into the Harrisburg Park and revenue away from the town center businesses into the hands of vendors that possibly could be from outside of our town. So let me repeat that. We're going to move and push events from the town center area where we're constantly here. Let's do something with the town center area over to the park. We should save our town staff's valuable time that can be otherwise spent working on activities for our youth and will mold them into productive Harrisburg citizens in the future and not to say in the long run, save our town possible consequences and headaches in the future. Let's keep Harrisburg a place for years to come and vote no for allowing beer and wine sales in Harrisburg Park. And a couple of questions I have, Jim, is how many applicants are receiving and requesting the ability to have alcohol sales? And what type of events are they?
So far, Councilman Delinger, we've been at none. Nobody, we are not sitting on any applications currently for selling beer and wine at any events. So right now, the only events that would have that would be the Rockin' the Burg events that we had planned on doing through the summer.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Jim, I got a question with regards to the vendors that we use for the beer and wine distribution. Is that anyway matching the process we use today when we think of a vendor, whether they be electrician or whether they be, you know, somebody that does something for the town? Do we want to put these guys with that same standard and validate everything's good before we even get to the point of saying, this is who the beer and wine distributors can be?
Yeah, we certainly can do that, Ron, Councilman Smith. We, right now, have been using, you know, try to get the two local, the couple of local tap houses and and also Cabarrus Brewing, who have a longstanding relationship with the town and these events. But, so right now, we just reach out to them and get them involved, and there's also a local winery that also comes out. You know, try to keep it local, but we certainly can adjust that policy or that process if council deems it appropriate.
The other question I had is on item three. You've got all youth programs held in the park must be completed prior to start of that. Is there any way we can put either 30 minutes, cannot begin until at least 30 minutes after the last youth event or hour on the?
Sure. I mean, yeah, you know, if you, if council would feel more comfortable having a time buffer in there, that's fine. We had already planned on doing that on our own. You know, the idea would be that if somebody made that request, for example, in our May Rockin' the Burg, our plan is to make sure schedule reflects that they're out of there. I'm pretty sure we said two hours prior to. That was just our own deal. Just give us time to clear it, make sure parking's enough and everything's ready. So, you know, we have decided to do that internally anyways, but if we want it written down officially, that can easily be adjusted.
And clarification on the previous question from Councilman Delinger. You have or you have not had request outside of the town to use the venue?
Not at this time. Not at this time. You know, we had the one last year. Then they ended up staying in town center, and I believe they're going to school in town center. So I, right now, we don't have anybody who's requested it, but we wanted to make sure. And this came out of that conversation last fall with you folks, that let's get a policy in there so that when and if it does happen, we, you know, we had a set of guidelines to regulate whether it was appropriate or not.
Jim, do you have a, do you have a written policy on how you accept or how you deny? And Rich, you might want to jump in on this because there are going to be a liability for accepting some and denying others because, you know, a hard rock crowd is far different than a smooth jazz crowd. So, I mean, how are you, how are you going to determine what application you said, what application you deny?
The plan was to basically look at the guidelines, make sure that, you know, size of crowd, their plan for security, their beer garden request size, you know, and to work with them to make sure it fits within the guidelines. And if they did, you know, we would probably go ahead and authorize. But again, it would be based on their plans and whether they had, you know, functionality in their security and in their event organization.
Do you think there is some liability to this, Rich?
Well, the only thing I would say is that if the applicant meets the guidelines that the town has, I think they would have to approve it. If they don't meet those guidelines, they wouldn't. And you couldn't discriminate or pick just based on what type of event it is.
Right.
Exactly. That would be the way you'd have to look at it.
And what, you know, once the policy gets there and the word gets out that we're going to allow beer sales and wine sales in Harrisburg Park, the request will come. Once it gets put out there, the request will come. Here again, please concentrate on the youth of America and like Reverend Ham said, let's keep some of the outside world away from them and let the park be a safe place for- Let's keep some of the outside world away from them and let the park be a safe place for our youth of America. And and I'll weigh in here just because I was on the fence last year when we were. Contemplating allowing it and I went to several of the Rock and Bird experiences, the symphony. And it was well maintained, I I came back with a different opinion, I was like, you know. What a bunch of hooligans out there just raising hell and I didn't see our sheriffs really, I saw sheriffs actually interacting more and talking to the. Folks that were there, I mean. If if we think that alcohol is not being brought into the park, we're all naive. If we can create an atmosphere where we would prefer to stay fostered, I would be much more supportive of that. I'll support this, I I would like to see a change on item three or timeline, but I'll be behind.
Got to ask for our deputy to weigh in on this. I don't think that we had any incidents at our previous Rockin' the Burg with alcohol sales.
We've never had any incidents from alcohol of related incidents at the park ever. And as the beer garden with us having it cored off, Parks and Rec always has ample people. We can see the sedentary at the entrance, sedentary at the exit, we can see a line of sight, we can see each other. We've had no problems, including the Fourth of July, which. Councilman Smith said, we all know there's alcohol coming in the park, we we see it in koozies, but we're not checking coolers. And we've never had an incident in the years that I've been out here in the park, even with such a mass crowd, it's always been fifteen year old kids fighting or missing parents or kids. So from the law enforcement standpoint, we haven't seen anything that I feel I need to warn you about with bringing alcohol to the park. Let the sheriff's office support a decision you guys set.
Jim, I have a couple of questions. First, splash pad is generally open later than the games. Are you expecting to have to close the splash pad a little early on some of these days? Are you expecting they push the event further out or just have them start the sales of alcohol later than their, you know, their event begins?
But to be honest, Councilwoman Cottell, last year. We we closed the splash pad anyways. Prior to the events, only because we need the parking and it's kind of crazy and it's a it's one less. A distraction for us as a staff to deal with the splash pad while the event's going on. So we've closed that earlier on days of the Rockin' the Burg concerts. So we would, you know, continue with that process, make sure, I think we closed at five, I believe, or five thirty. To make sure that we had time to clear that out and get them out of there and and be prepared for the event.
And as far as the insurance policy, where you're adding, you're going to be requiring that the town has added as an additional insurance, is that in place right now?
Yes, we we do that for all events anyways, any any outside group that uses any, you know, any of our parks for any reason. If we have a soccer club that comes in and rents a field, they have to have, they have to show liability protection, so and listing the town. So we 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 require that regardless of alcohol, you know, beer, wine in an event or just plain usage.
Any other counsel comments?
Just if. I mean, these are guidelines, I don't I don't remember the conversation, I guess they were. Be asked for you guys to come back and present some too, is that?
This was a normally we wouldn't see this.
No, I remember and I remember the vote, I'm sympathetic to Mr. Delinger and how he feels about it. Clearly, if someone wanted to bring it up, if we mitigate it, go through the public process, we could, I just, it's odd. For me, it's odd to see like internal policy guidelines on our desk.
Yeah, and and I've got very, very little to say, but I'll I'll speak to that and a little bit. Councilman Price's question earlier, so, yeah, the the sales of alcohol at Harrisburg Park were already decided on. But when they were, staff was instructed to bring back a standard set of policies by which you can judge all events from. What we had done up until then is to bring each and every event's plan. Up for discussion, debate, and that just doesn't leave staff any time. To plan out a season long series of concerts, which primarily is what we're talking about here. There are some chances for other events to have it, but primarily what we do here is our concert series. And we we sell beer at the concerts, which is an expectation for most of the people to go there. So it was instructed to staff, you know, bring something back where this is more standardized. So that you can implement the policy internally without getting it approved each and every time. So that's, that's why this particular policy is for you is, you're right, typically, we would. We would adopt these policies internal and adjust them internal. However, this is a hot topic issue and certainly we want to hear what council has to say on it. The 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 former question about, you know, liability. The the main thing that Jim and I spoke about, and Jim spent a tremendous amount of time with his staff, with town management. And and everybody kicking this around was just that. This policy needs to ensure foremost that this can be done in a safe and responsible way. And, you know, if there are any issues with that and that alone, then you wouldn't be able to get a permit. We don't have the ability as a town to decide. You know, you and your organization can do this, but you and your organization can't. So it's very important, and I think, you know, Jim did hit the target you with making sure that all of the. Tools that we need in the policy to make sure that we've done in a safe, responsible way are there. We don't know what we don't know, but based on what we've done up until this point, that this policy fits very well with ensuring that that happens.
Last question, is this policy, Jim, in alignment with other communities who have beer and wine sales?
It's a little different, like Canapolis sells their own, they sell it themselves, they control it, the town sells it directly for profit. So it's little, it's kind of hard as apples to oranges a little bit because we're just asking for a third party with proper. Proper permitting. So that that was the one we kind of matched up, they had to do the concert series similar to us. So we kind of did it that way, but most, most places do allow alcohol in some form at their own. I'm not sure about outside handling of it, to be honest with you. If, you know, if an outside event wants to use their their place, I'm not sure of that, I just know what their internal requirements are for their own events.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Harrisburg doesn't have to be like everybody else. That's what I keep trying to say when I look at Harrisburg, that I want Harrisburg to be different. It doesn't need to be like everywhere else. But let me just look over to the town manager and and look to Mr. Spina. So we're talking about hourly rates now, in the budget, we're talking about hourly rates. So we're talking about, here again, I'm going to bring up the example of a birthday party for a fifty year old, they invite two hundred guests. They want to serve beer and wine. We're, this policy would require them to have a million dollar insurance policy to be able to do that. Is that correct?
Yes, they will have to have insurance in place and a third party serving it. Yeah, we, those are going to be significant tools in to help us gauge the appropriateness of.
And a defined area to serve and people to check ID and security to work the entrance and exits.
Same as.
And let me, if if you don't mind my adding, we also are going to lean heavily on Lieutenant Miesmer and his gang. As they have to coordinate with this group and to make sure that they are comfortable with the. With the layout in their process that is that is forwarded to them. So, you know, this is not just a, this is a kind of a two and three pronged. Attack on on the appropriateness of of selling of alcohol.
So Jim, you you mentioned something with regards to like Canapolis back years ago when this was being originally. Considered initially was proposed for the symphony two park rec or correct directors ago. They realized then that. Less skin in the game, if we had the vendor come in and had the vendors insure themselves. But at that time, I don't remember, were we getting any take on that, are we getting? With anybody doing these alcohol sales, are we getting any take, or are they pure profit?
No, that's a good question, Ron, thank you for asking that. Yeah, we, right now, we may, we receive a dollar fifty per beer sold. And they they submit that to us immediately after the concert, I think, within a week or so, April probably could speak to that better than I could because she handled that last year. But we do get a dollar fifty per beer as a royalty for them to come in.
And that, is that only on town events or is that all events or?
No, no, that's right now with town events. You know, just because we're bringing them in, it's, you know, our vendors is is, you know, our contract thing. That is something that we also, you know, could deal with, but that's part of the fees that we would charge, would you would kind of give us some profit, so. That, but that is something we could discuss forward if that's important.
Jim, are we talking about these events and venues running in concert with youth sports? So we can have a fifty year old's birthday party with wine and beer and a soccer game right on the other side of the road?
No. So, so, so. Councilman Price, let's assume that somebody wants to do the second Saturday in in May. And they wanted to have a a fiftieth birthday party and they said they want to go at two o'clock, we say, no, no, we have, we have sports until six o'clock. Your party would have to be starting at seven o'clock and, you know, we would do it that way. And we would not adjust, one thing we want to do, we won't do, and I've made sure staff understood. For private parties of those kind of things, we would not adjust our schedule, our schedule would come first and they would fit within our schedule. And we would just do it that way. Our own events, we know what they are, we know what they're involved, those are rescheduling. Around our events a little bit, but private events would have to deal with the schedule available to them.
And Jim, it varies by event, but the cleanup, is that typically us or them?
No, so for our events, obviously it's us. For outside events, they will be responsible for the cleanup, there will be a large. Fairly sizable cleaning deposit, security deposit. And they would have to clean up, you know, and there'll be some requirements of emptying garbage, we're not asking them to spit shine the place, but we would expect all garbage picked up. Rollouts put in place on the curb, chairs cleaned off, tables cleaned off, whatever the usage they have. And and then our staff would come in on the following morning just to make sure everything was tidied up and left in a decent manner.
Other questions for Jim or Ron?
Mayor, may I make one comment? About, sorry, I talked to Jim about this, but we want to make sure that that insurance that we get. From both the provider and the event holder is a covered dram shop liability. Which is a special type of liability that covers alcohol events, it's aside from general life. We want to make sure they have that in their policies.
What was that called again?
Dram shop, D R A M shop liability.
Did you get that, Jim?
Yep, yep, I will reach out to Rich and make sure we get those requirements, so make sure they're properly submitted.
So Rich, when we talked about it this past fall, we said, I believe I misunderstood, they did. Insurance on it was relatively cheap and that the town is not liable at all for any consequential accidents that may happen.
Well, that's the purpose of having that insurance in place, and that the town is saying the digital insured. So that liability insurance becomes the primary coverage, not the town's regular insurance. That's the whole reason for that, so, so yes, if they have, if the insurance has the correct coverage. Particularly the dram shop liability coverage, as they call it. But then, any kind of issue that comes up from the use of alcohol. Like in that venue would be covered by the insurance.
But we're only requiring one million dollar coverage.
Well, that's.
In today's society, a million dollars isn't much, but it can stand up to a lot of things.
Well, I mean, that's true, I can't argue with that. Maybe, you know, coverage should be more than that. I didn't really focus on that, it was just a question of having the coverage. And that amount would cover virtually any kind of of privacy that would come up, but it certainly couldn't cover every. You see larger coverage these days than maybe. It's truly what a council would think would be the proper amount, it's kind of hard to say with that. But I I can't disagree with you, a million dollars isn't what it used to be.
Other questions or discussions? So it sounds like, let me just recap here, I think we have so far two, possibly three adjustments. To these consideration guidelines, the first, I believe, Councilman Smith was under item three to make sure that there was a designated time. Buffer put in there. It sounded like, Jim, that you already had around two hours for the Rockin' the Burg concerts, is that correct?
Yeah, that's for for our youth sports and a big chunk of that is make sure we have enough parking, so. Two hours would be fine in that, that would work for me without much issue.
And then I believe as Rich brought up under five to make sure that that dram shop liability coverage is also added in as a requirement. And then there's a third consideration of whether that million dollar coverage is enough or if that needs to be increased.
Maybe we need to understand what that does cost wise. You're saying a million five versus ten, whatever that is, does it dramatically go up or is it?
I'm not sure what the what the premium is. And I guess if if making it cost prohibitive is the is the goal, then we need to. Investigate that from a pure liability standpoint of what we're trying to cover. It's in line with what we require on other. Sort of high risk activities such as amusements or other physical activities. You know, that we do out there, two millions probably. See, when it's not a million, you know, it's they generally go in. In those ranges, like don't, I don't know for sure, but I would think two million is cost prohibitive, but I can. We can certainly make that. We can make that adjustment outside of policy and set that to be whatever it needs to be for alcohol sales of being whatever the council feels necessary. From a pure risk standpoint. Wildly concerning on our end, because anything above that, we are still insured, but it's our insurance. Generally, the types of things we see happen at high risk events are are within that. I don't think we've ever exceeded that in your time here, have we, Rich?
No, we haven't. Not in terms of claims, but that's what you mean, yeah.
Push it back, that would be an issue for the eight fourteen. Schedule concert.
Yeah, I mean, I think I, maybe I speak for Jim here, may maybe not, Jim, but I assume you need this. Resolved as far as, looks like the first two are easily resolved, we had the alcohol liability and we had the additional buffer in. The. The liability amount is something that if we can get solved tonight, you would prefer rather than reschedule any event.
Yes, yes, we we were all set to go for. Yes, yes, we we're all set to go for May eighth, I think it is our first one. So so, yeah, so.
As far as if you're seeing the liability, I feel like if a million is the standard and historically we haven't even come close to it, considering that, like, fourth of July, there is other events we have, you know, kids riding all kinds of things. I I feel like we're okay keeping it at one million. And that's something that can be revisited.
Anytime.
Down the road as well.
It's it's even something we could, just as a staff, make that determine higher risk if we do that. But, yeah, that can be revisited at any moment.
Does this even need a vote or is this just a FYI hit comment?
My understanding is the policy needed to be adopted by council so that staff can implement it moving forward.
So I'll make the motion adopt this or motion to adopt with a change to item three and change to item five. Spelling out specific insurance and spelling out a specific timeframe. End of youth events beginning of state.
And there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Yeah, good.
Thank you, Rick. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion has carried. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Jim. It's moving right along to over here. B, consideration of approval of the resolution for the wastewater allocation and commitment policy.
That is me.
Do I need to get some coffee, Rob?
You don't, I'll be. You don't need any coffee. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be as brief as possible. So we we've we've discussed this policy at length together, you know, as a as a council and and staff. But also wanted to give you a presentation in case you have a question. And obviously for the thousands of people watching across the world, be impressed with this with this presentation. So just a little background on what this policy is. I know everybody's had an opportunity to read through it, but why do we have it? The history of this is that Harrisburg has been a member of the Water and Sewer Authority of Parris County since the nineteen nineties, when the organization was formed. And WASAC is is the acronym we use for it. As part of WASAC, we have an ownership stake along with the other member communities and countywide sewer treatment infrastructure. And a hundred percent of our sewer here in Harrisburg goes to the Rocky River Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant, which you can see there on the screen is a is a really large treatment plant that treats all the sewer from most of the county, but all of Harrisburg. In in the last year and a half or so, we've kind of ran into capacity issues at this plant due to two factors primarily. One, the unprecedented growth in Parris County and Harrisburg in particular has seen a large amount of that growth and the unprecedented rainfall in the last couple of years. That also goes into the calculation of how much capacity you have to plant because in general, when we have really high rainfall, we've really had water tables and that saturates the sanitary sewer lines. And that water needs treated just like regular sanitary sewer. So that kind of artificially sends those numbers up at the plant. In that amount of time that, you know, we've seen those two factors, the plant itself has reached its max capacity much quicker than anticipated. The plant is designed to meet twenty six and a half million gallons or to treat twenty six and a half million gallons per day. The paper capacity and rainfall capacity of that twenty six and a half is about five to six million gallons a day. So at the plant, what they're measuring coming in at this point this year is about twenty million gallons. But for each project that's on the books, there is a paper capacity. So when we do a permit for a neighborhood, it may take three years to build out. When they start putting it in and and we take out that permit, we've reserved that capacity. Once it's it's through and it's constructed, then we're just measuring it at the plant again. But in that meantime, there there is, there's some paper capacity. And that rainfall capacity is calculated quarterly. And those reports are sent to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. And they tell you how much of that you need to account for as your flow. What we've seen in the last year is that that rainfall has gone down dramatically and helped this capacity issue. When it was first brought up to us, we were out of capacity. We may had two hundred thousand gallons left for the entire county. And you'll see further in the presentation, by the time we allocated everything out, it ended up closer to two million gallons. There are expansions planned in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty seven. But between now and then, we have to deal with this capacity issue. So the solution to this, obviously, with the besides the expansions are that WASAC formed an allocation committee made up of the member communities who who met all through twenty twenty one to to work out what could we do to to make sure that we don't run out of capacity? And WASAC also, on behalf of the town, the town also applied for this, or flow reductions in the paper capacity. So for each bedroom, there is a standard amount of flow that that's given on your permitting. That is typically a hundred and twenty gallons per bedroom per day. Everybody, I don't have to tell everybody here, Harrisburg tends to have lots of bedrooms and homes that aren't occupied. They're an office, they're a theater room, they're this, that or another. So that number is pretty pretty high for us. When when all is said and done and we bring a house online, it's using about fifty, maybe even forty five gallons per bedroom per day in Harrisburg. So we did apply and and received a reduction from a hundred and twenty down to eighty. That was a compromise. Obviously, it's higher than what we use, but but it was a number comfortable that the state was comfortable to grant on a countywide basis. The committee also recommended that each community have its own direct allocation so that we're not competing with each other and trying to rush to the front of the the fire exit to get as much of the capacity before somebody else does. So so allocate that out to each community through a formulary method. And that was a hotly debated conversation of what that formula needs to be, but was ultimately agreed to by all parties. Harrisburg uses and pays for roughly nine percent of the current wastewater capacity. And on future allocations, other than this first one, will receive approximately nine percent of future expansions. Will be on a sliding scale that's adjusted. So if our amount goes up to twelve percent or thirteen percent of usage, if we're growing at faster rate than others, we would we would then get that twelve or thirteen percent recalculated amount. And we'll have local rationing of the sewer capacity while the plant expansions are complete. And we'll each ration that individually based on our own needs in our own communities. So what does this mean for Harrisburg in particular? Approximately two million gallons a day of capacity remaining. We have gotten our allocation of that of two hundred and eighteen thousand gallons per day. That's what we'll allocate directly between now and twenty twenty four. When that when that first expansion is done, we do have that expansion in twenty seven as well. In twenty twenty four, we'll add three and a half million gallons a day to the Rocky River plant. We would project our portion of that to be about three hundred fifteen thousand additional gallons per day. And then the twenty twenty seven is a four million gallon expansion. So we would most likely see here in Harrisburg another three hundred sixty thousand gallons per day to allocate once we get to that expansion. As projects are put into use, like I said before, the paper capacity goes away and all of those actual flows are recalculated. And there will be biannual distributions. So WASAC will look and say, okay, how much capacity do we actually have? What's new available capacity based on what we've brought online? And then reallocate that out. I would anticipate that to produce ten to twenty percent increase over the next five years on that excess capacity that we know is is out there based on, again, Harrisburg really using forty five to fifty gallons per day per bedroom versus the eighty that we're planning for. And then we'll internally ration here in Harrisburg per our adopted policy, which you guys have in front of you. So what is the policy? I I copy and pasteed just our our policy statement there, which really covers how we'll decide what's going on. So the town seeks to grant wastewater allocations in a way that supports economic growth, economic diversity, the strengthening of our tax base, creation of jobs and promotion of high quality development while maximizing existing infrastructure and service delivery capacity to provide a foundation for this policy. The Harrisburg Town Council hereby adopts the following broad development priorities and determines that they are in the best interest of the town, its citizens and its stakeholders. The rest of policy defines what those broad priorities are. In those broad priorities, we have an allocation committee that reviews and approves these requests. We'll probably do that on a quarterly basis. That's what tends to be being done and tends to work well. If we need to do it more frequently, we will. But for now, that'll that will be the plan. First priority will be our strategic reserve as well as economic development projects. That being the most important, you know, part of of this policy is that we have a certain amount allocated for council and and economic development projects of things that we don't know are out there that will be out there. This would include public safety facilities. This would include an industrial user that may come in and need economic development support. Anything in that economic development or strategic reserve would be priority number one. Priority number two, and this is just a immediate priority, which is the previously approved projects that are currently in design. We have projects that are being designed. They've invested an enormous amount of capital, time and effort as well as the town has. And the second priority would be to make sure that they have the allocation phased out along the appropriate number of years that they would need it. And they would have a period of time to get their design done. This isn't something that goes on in perpetu- in perpetuity. They have a hundred and twenty days to finish their design and an additional hundred and twenty days to start building. If they were to miss either of those deadlines, that they would lose that. They would need to reapply for a preliminary allocation and go through the same process everyone else will, which is priority three, the waiting list slash all other projects. Thirty percent of our total capacity at any time will be economic development strategic reserve. So we know we have this two hundred and eighteen now, we can take thirty percent of that out. It would go over to economic development strategic reserve. The remainder is going to be split forty percent residential, sixty percent commercial. And the projects would be phased in a manner to limit each applicant, so each allocation to fifty homes per year. That would ensure that no one is 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 really going gangbuster, trying to overcommit. The most homes we really see is in the seventy to a hundred. If somebody gets into that seventy or a hundred, they're a very aggressive builder and and they're knocking it out pretty quick. I don't believe this is a big ask to go to fifty. And it is what every builder is going to have to do if they're going to build in Parris County. So this is the same limit Concord has, it's the same limit Canaveral says. Policy continued. Projects that that come through this preliminary application process are not specifically competing against each other. They they may come in the first quarter, they may come in the second quarter. However, we do want to have some objective measure for us to look at these projects and come up with a scoring system to apply in addition to the other policy criteria that we have in here, which obviously is overriding. Does it meet that policy statement? Does it meet all of our criteria? But we also wanted to put, you know, some things in here that we feel like staff and council are passionate about and would would give us a scoring system in case we need. So you you see here for you the residential prioritization evaluation as well as the non-residential. A few things to point out and one change that is a typo in here, or at least not a typo, maybe a mental typo because I typed the wrong word. I meant to put medium lot size instead of mean lot size. That's what I get for trying to be fancy and not use average. I did not want it to be average and I typed another word for average instead of the median. The the goal here was to make sure there are as many lots greater than three quarter as there are less than three quarter, so that we don't just end up with like two really big lots and a bunch that are under it and they still get those points. I'll make that change in the policy if you guys recognize that. And then if you just kind of look in general, I think we we did a pretty good job of adding points for things like town center. If it qualifies for low density stormwater, taking points negative for non-continuous annexation. The things that we generally understand to be disadvantageous, either get no points or or a negative point if they're extremely disadvantageous. And then higher the points, you know, the more we've seen public support for this, council support, staff support. That being said, I'll take any questions, but staff obviously recommends the approval of the resolution for acceptance of the town Harrisburg wastewater allocation and commitment policy.
So Rob, you see calm as usual. A lot of people out there, wait a minute, we're running out of, you know, capacity here. Challenger's question earlier about how many houses we have coming up, you know? You know, take three thousand, call them all three bedroom, multiply eighty gallons a day, you know? Seven hundred and twenty thousand. And we have two hundred and eighteen thousand left until twenty twenty four, assuming, you know, magically construction happens on time, which never does.
Yeah, if so, if every single house were to be permitted in the next eighteen months, we got.
Stretchable amount.
Right. So what we've typically seen is about two hundred and fifty homes per year built in Harrisburg during a time where we feel like homes are probably growing too quickly. This allocation amount based on our pacing, we'd see upwards of four hundred homes if we were going to do only only homes available per year. If we start taking out strategic reserve and and some other things, I think a realistic number, if we were going to use a hundred thousand gallons per day per year that we're going to allocate out of that two hundred and eighteen, that works out to a couple hundred houses, two hundred and twenty ish houses per year. So it's a little reduction, but you're talking maybe ten percent reduction on the average. And that's that's not including, again, some of those allocations that we don't know about yet due to big projects coming online. For instance, you know, one of the big projects we all know about now is Red Bull. So Red Bull has a million gallon allocation or or something allocated to it on behalf of Concord. And that comes online, that million comes back in and whatever they're actually sending out will be measured at the plant and instead of being reserved. So that million will get reallocated back in. There may be four or five hundred thousand, in my opinion, that actually will be used at least for the first several years until they ramp up to full capacity. And even then, these numbers are generally much lower than what we have to allocate for design. So there will be some restriction and we have to be more careful not to allocate everything out, which is the purpose of the strategic reserve. So, you know, keeping that that area is very important and making sure that those are projects that are of significant impact to the town. And then then also dividing out most of it to commercial so that you really have forty percent, seventy percent. So twenty eight percent of. So twenty eight percent of total allocation going to single family residential or multifamily residential in here unless they are a strategic project, like maybe a town center might have some mixed use that you could use to allocate that, so.
I could easily see up to four or five hundred with desire of companies to get houses built immediately while they can sell them for what they're selling for now. Two major projects on Stallings, Farmington, I can't remember how much is ours, but that gets allocated as well. I understand some of that will come out of a different pot, but you can easily see this run up against our against our allocation in, you know, twenty three.
We we potentially could, most of our projects like those two on Stallings are already, those are already permitted allocated, so those are already in that six million paper capacity. The projects to consider are Orchid or the Bridge, the courtyards, Epcun Courtyards, Robinson Church. Some of these projects that that do not have sewer permits in the pipeline that need them, we'll have to phase those out. I think that's where that fifty home in the internal engineering staff going through and saying, okay, we've got capacity in twenty three, but we don't in twenty four and we do in twenty five. Who's going to move and who are we going to hold accountable on their capacity? And making sure we have a realistic phasing program. It will be something that will change moderately. How will we develop in Harrisburg? It is a much more significant issue from Canaples and Concord where they're turning projects down. They've already turned several projects down at their quarterly meeting. We won't be up against that unless this plant expansion pushes. By the time these projects that we approve now actually get to the point where they are going to use this capacity, we're almost at twenty four. And all the ones that we already had then with the exception of Orchid, they're they're already permitted. So most of our other stuff are small thirty year, seventy lots there. Those ones are impactful, but the the four or five hundred home neighborhoods can be impactful. And that'll that'll be a strong consideration. An allocation moving forward is can we afford to allocate that much to one project in one spot when we may need commercial or industrial reserves instead?
Just so I'm surrounding by the way, I don't want us to get to a point, and I'm counting on your judgment on the percentages that you've allocated, where, you know, some business in the future comes in and says, we love Harrisburg, we want to be here, our values match, et cetera, et cetera, and say, you know, we'd love to have you, but we approve five thousand homes and we just can't do it. I don't want to be in that position.
Me and you both, I think that's the, if there's anything, we obviously don't want to be in a position where rationing sewer allocation. So that's primarily where you want to get. But if we're going to ration the least beneficial to our, I think to our goals and values as a town moving forward is single family residential. We'd much rather see commercial and industrial use of our sewer allocation. It's better on the tax base, it's better on the existing residents, it's better on the traffic congestion. So that's why only twenty eight percent of it is allocated out to single family residential. But that being said, there is still a need for that. So we don't want to go to zero on it, but it certainly isn't prioritized here. And I I share that, that same sentiment, it's it's certainly. I don't, you gotta put a lot of services in the single family residential homes along with the taxes that you collect, so.
Thanks.
I am concerned with the industrial use because depending on the industry, don't they have a really high water usage?
They can, it's settled out. It's individual use by use. But definitely some manufacturers that use water would have very specific demands. And those very large users are going to have a really hard time finding anywhere in Harris County the next eighteen months to locate until some of these are brought about.
Even after twenty four, that's only going to increase it by around three hundred some thousand in the next three years. So it's like on your previous slide, can we reduce industrial to zero? Or maybe have like two separate categories, like whatever you call like a large industrial or something?
I think would, so industrial would qualify. Yeah, so industrial would qualify with seventy two percent capacity under this policy. If anything, non-residential or strategic reserve would qualify.
I think we have some variables here too that I know they're still trying to advocate state to.
Yeah, I mean.
Continue with that arbitrary number of one twenty. It's great they negotiated it to eighty, but there's still a good bit of wiggle in there, I know. That's a continuing.
There's a not, yeah, there's a number of issues to to work out here long term. Eventually, you don't want these caps, but for the next five years, we should plan for this, you know, eight hundred to nine hundred thousand plus, you know, ten to twenty percent that we think we'll get. So, you know, we're probably looking again at at having the same allocation we have now over that over that five year period with these expansions. Eventually, that that plant is going to have to go over the, it would be this thirty four million. Much less for Harrisburg's sake than the rest of the county. You know, we 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 get our percentage, but also we're we're a small percentage of the debt service on this. So we're all in the same boat on this, you know, regionally. So I I do think there would be multiple solutions moving forward. But in the meantime, how do we protect those things that we want to do so that it doesn't all get eaten up in single family residential, which is the primary market driver here in Harrisburg? Is that we have high schools, we have great parks and recreation. We're ideally located to commute to Charlotte in the region. So, you know, there there there's no, there's no limit on the amount of residential that we could do here in Harrisburg. So we really need to make sure we're reserving the proper amount. And I think this hits it, I mean seventy eight percent seems seventy two percent, sorry. Seems like, you know, the right number to be dedicating to that. If we need to move it a little bit, I'm I'm all ears with that if it makes some, that's the purpose of the presentation. But ultimately, we still have that flexibility to to move things as we need and modify those policies. So I think it's a good start. I don't anticipate a lot of issues with it, but there's always issues with every new policy that you have.
And have you noticed any sizable increase since, you know, we're primarily visual community, more people being at home increases the situation?
No, no. We we initially, like the first couple of months, so you know, that was when you really locked down. But that number actually flattened out more than we we thought it would. Our usage is has gone down quite a bit. But I I would say the primary cause of that is we spend a lot investing in our our infrastructure, making sure there aren't leaks. So when we do get all that that rainwater, I mean, we're, we probably spent three times the amount annually. I didn't misspeak there, three times the amount annually on our infiltration protection that Canaples does. So much bigger city, much older infrastructure, a lot of old pipes in the ground over there. And our maintenance program, that's it's three times the size. So we do a really good job on the infrastructure maintenance and protection side. And that that helps keep a lot of our bills low because we don't have to pay to treat all that rainwater.
Any other questions for Rob? So with that, we will need a motion to execute the resolution to adopt Harrisburg wastewater allocation policy. Is that motion on the floor?
So moved.
Thank you, Ian, is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Maurice, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, council motion is carried. Last item under the business, which is something that councilman Delenger requested that we pull out. It's item eight, which is the set of the public hearing for the main night twenty twenty two, consider the annexation of properties off Robinson Church Road and Peach Orchard Road.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The reason I pulled it out is on November the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty one. This development, along with another development, was presented via in person and Zoom. I was on the Zoom call and actually the another development was there also that nobody responded or talked to about it during that development meeting. I was on the Zoom call, the audio for those speaking in the audience cannot be heard because the audience was not mic'd. Additionally, there was a speaker for the developer in the chambers at the podium as well as a representative in the chat room. There was basically two conversations going on, one in the chambers and then one by developer representing, representative answering questions at the same time to those asking questions in the chat room. So in addition to not being able to hear audience questions and discussions, one had to follow two conversations at once during the developer meeting. And I had a very hard time hearing what the audience was saying because they were not mic'd. The next day, I contacted the acting town manager at the time and reported my concerns with the audio, the handling of the two representatives communicating at one time. I appreciate the developer has agreed to having another developers meeting. We have received those emails, they have set it up for the twenty first of this month. So they agreed to set that up again with the residents that might be affected by the proposed development, have their concerns heard maybe. I know the notices have been sent out and they have been received by the residents. My concern now is that any input that will be received from the April twenty first meeting will not be able to be incorporated into the proposed development presented before town council next month at the public hearing. I am amending the motion to set the public hearing of the property for Robinson Church and Peach Orchard for the June fourteenth monthly town council meeting instead of May ninth. So what that will do is give anything that comes out of the developer meeting again with the residents, it will give them time to implement it into the design. So it's just pushing out the public hearing by law.
Council, are there any questions?
Town manager. And I may call on Sushil and Rich here, but I'm I'm not sure we have the ability to move the the public hearing back a month. I'm sure the town requested, but I'm not sure that we have the authority to involuntarily.
Trying to think of what the debt, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see, I'm not sure Sushil is still.
I'm I'm still here, Rob.
The the timeframe for the, because this was passed at at planning board, correct?
Yes, so the wills were already in motion in terms of due process and taking this agenda through the process. I wish that the concerns about the neighborhood meeting that happened many, many months ago was brought to the staff so we could have taken care of. But regardless, I I hear there was some audio issues, but to be fair, council member Delenger, there had been zero communication to my office, neither via email nor nor phone conversation right after the meeting that anybody expressed concern that they were not heard. We we actually received multiple written questions about this project before to the meeting and had worked diligently with the with the applicant to address those. They also had several meetings with Hawthorne's resident and I had worked with them knowing that you had expressed some of the concern about the neighborhood meeting to have that another meeting. We have, today's call is simply to schedule a public hearing. So the public hearing is in May. There is an opportunity for us to make any changes to the site plan even after the public hearing because the action is not taken at that meeting, action is at the June meeting. So, I mean, from a staff perspective and from a due process, I think I would recommend to keep it as it is, but I'll also rely on Rich to to give us any guidance because this this is the first I'm dealing with.
So the the, back to original question, Sushil, that this, I believe we have sixty days from from planning board before.
Correct. So the planning board reviewed and made recommendation on the rezoning. So from the day of the planning board action, we have sixty days to to call the public hearing for the rezoning. If you recall for annexation, we always call for a public hearing and it's scheduled at the council meeting. The annexation is not presented to the planning board, that's a council action. So once we present it to the planning board, that's when the public hearing process is already in motion. So we've already started that process. The call for annexation hearing is is a different path. Ultimately, we meet in May and hold both public hearing at the same time. So we're geared towards that action, we're already in the motion to achieve that that process timeline.
Understood, but from an option standpoint, but my question is, logistically, process wise, are, does council even have that option? Or must they here have the the public hearing? Because that May date is within the sixty, but the June is not.
The way it stands today, yes.
Sorry?
The way it stands today and the timeline we're working with to meet that sixty day timeline, we have to continue on with with the with with the call for public hearing.
Right, okay. And then from a, from an optional, from a who gets to make this determination standpoint, I guess then my question would be to to Rich or Sushil, would the would the applicant be able to voluntarily do that? Or is this something council can determine to to waive as far as that timeframe?
I really don't think council could waive it. And I I had thought of the sixty days, I don't have it in front of me, that's what I thought it was, I just couldn't remember. And but the applicant always has the option of asking for more time because that sixty days is for their benefit for due process brief so that their application can't just be sitting sitting around and not be acted on.
So if I'm understanding the timeline correctly, they have agreed to hold another neighborhood meeting on April twenty first. And then the public hearing is set for May ninth, so we're not making a determination at that point. So we'll still have neighborhood meeting input plus public hearing input before a decision is made in June.
That is correct.
So to to some of my understanding of it, the the options that council would have would be to keep it as is and you would be able to have a neighborhood meeting on April twenty first. That was the, as David mentioned, you would have eighteen nineteen days to then incorporate those comments into the public hearing presentation. You would then have the additional month to incorporate the public hearing comments into the final presentation where you take action. If that process is a, for council, I think the proper motion would be to request the developer to move to the May meeting in in which case they would voluntarily, we we meet all of our requirements.
Mr. Lehman would like to state.
Council does also have option at the public hearing because we've done this in the past.
Lehman sounds a lot like Sushil.
Hey, guys, this is.
Hey, guys. This is Benji Layman. I was, so I'm the engineer for the project. So, yeah, I can't make any decisions for the home builder as far as pushing any meetings back. But what I would like to say is we, myself and representatives from the home builder, we actually met on site with the adjacent property owners that wanted to come out, which included two members, one that I think is the HOA president of Hawthorne. And we walked the site with them. And then that was before our community meeting. And then we also, after the community meeting and after some changes we made working with Sushil, we had another conference call with those same neighbors. And so we have had several conversations outside of the neighborhood meeting. So, you know, obviously we, we like to stay on schedule. We, we've gone ahead and set up a second neighborhood meeting, but we feel like we've kept kind of the communication lines open between ourselves and any of the neighbors that have had any questions. So I just wanted to throw that in, that, that we have been kind of working behind the scenes outside of the typical process on, you know, trying to get everybody around on board with, with kind of the design of the project and, and listening to feedback that they've been giving us.
Thank you, Mr. Layman.
Miss Mayor, I have a question for, for Sushil. And it may be Rich here as well, just, just trying to think, since we don't have somebody to make a decision on the phone, is the applicant able to, after the public hearing, request an extension on the decision? So if they hold a public hearing in May, they're entitled to a decision in June. Do they request a decision in July if all the neighborhood meeting stuff had not been incorporated or the public hearing comments had not been incorporated? I believe we've done that in the past, but I'll verify.
I think that, that is correct. So we, we've done that in the past in other, other scenarios where council had held a public hearing and if there were outstanding items, council would present that the, the accident be deferred until certain time and applicant would agree or disagree at that point, but they would have that option to do that. I was going to mention early on is, I think, I believe public hearing, the day of the public hearing is probably the right venue for council to either move the action or defer the action until, until all the issues are resolved, rather than not, not holding the public hearing itself. But I'll, I'll let Rich speak if I'm offline.
Well, no, I think that makes sense. And particularly since there's no person with the applicant that's able to, to agree to that tonight, it might best to just wait till it goes back on the agenda when it's, when at that point it'll be scheduled for public hearing. And if they, if they have ability, they want to continue it. And that, I think there wouldn't be a problem with that. I say those deadlines are for the, the benefit of the applicant. The, the, you know, council or whichever board can't just settle on their application and not ever consider it. That's why those are deadlines are in place. But they can always agree to continue something. If, you know, and if you have their agreement, then it can be helped whenever. But I think right now, we're in a position where we really don't know. And in order to keep the deadline, I think it needs to, you know, go forward with the May public hearing and decision in June. Because we don't want to create an illegal issue with something like this. And those are easy legal issues for a court to resolve. If you haven't made your deadline, it basically
It isn't an illegal issue when you have, and you, and we've gone through this for two years now, when people are on Zoom calls to be able to hear and understand the conversations. And Sushil, I did report the very next day to the acting town manager the information. But I will withdraw my motion. But here again, we owe it to our residents to fix these audio issues and have mics there where people, when they talk in the audience, can't be heard for whoever's listening. Because all we are is discouraging participants from our town and our residents if we cannot meet their needs. This is the first opportunity I had to bring this up, and that's why I brought it up and pulled it out.
Thank you, Councilman Dellinger. Is there a motion on the floor to set a public hearing for May ninth to consider annexation of properties off Robinson Church Road and Peach Orchard Road? Thank you, Ian. Is there a second?
Certainly.
Thank you, Maurice. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. That was it for new business this evening. Action items? Rob, does you have a list or?
I do. It's, I do. It's, it's a little shorter as well. I like that. I had we're to talk staff about setting up a process for invites to official events and getting those to the right applicant. Also, get the expired emails deleted, make sure those are out of our systems. Everything's getting bounced back. And then just the last one, right there with the last debate was, we're going to, you know, remind the applicant that there's still, although we're holding the hearing, there still is an outstanding question on public input, public outreach, and we'll expect those questions to be answered during the public hearing. Or we'll ask the applicant if they would consider a deferral while those are outstanding. That is all. Did I miss anything?
That's, that's all I have. That's all. Thank you, Rob. We do not have a closed session this evening. So with that, I will move, is there a motion on the floor to adjourn the meeting this evening? Thank you. Ian, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.